Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, everybody, to the Temple Terrace City Council meeting. If I could remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones and electronic devices. And if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, please send your Spirit down upon us as we engage the gift of freedom entrusted to us tonight. Open our hearts and minds to know your will as we endeavor to promote peace and prosperity within our city. We ask you to heal the divisions that plague our great nation and to bring us all together on earth as you wish us to be in heaven. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see everybody out tonight. First item on the agenda is recognitions and proclamations. We have none. We have no presentations or board appointments. So the first action item is the consideration of minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? If so, we'll entertain them.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or amendments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We ask speakers to come to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence. We'd like to assure everybody that during public comment, the city manager and directors in attendance do take note of the items and will follow up on your concerns. I have, first request to speak is from Ms. Janne Tumbleson. Tumbleson, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Now, I have two requests.
Yes. Okay. I'll do Charles's first, please.
Okay. Well, hold on just a second. Let me get some clarifications. If you'd stop the time there for Cheryl, let me get some clarification here. Is it three minutes total? There are two requests here, but it's all for the same public.
I've heard it was five.
How long does Ms. Tumbleson get? Because if somebody puts in 10 of these, they don't get 30 minutes.
Is she representing herself or is she speaking for a group?
She is representing herself according to this, but on two different topics. But neither are on the agenda.
Okay. Then she would get to speak three minutes on each topic.
But there is a cap. You're right.
That is not on the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, as far as, like you said.
I mean, if they're...
That's it?
Two minutes first because it's not...
Yeah, I was gonna say, because then somebody could say, "I want to talk about 10 different topics," and turn in...
Well, I mean, are these two totally separate items?
Yes. I'm judging from what she wrote. One is the site plan for Salem and the other is the city manager contract. Neither of which are on the agenda. But it does, I'm just trying to remember how the rules state. I don't think you can get three minutes...
Is there a copy of the procedural?
Read the first line.
I'm sorry?
Read your first line, write in your notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, three-minute time limit imposed on all comments.
Regardless.
Yeah, I don't think you get three minutes on each thing you want to talk about.
Yeah, it says regardless of subject matter, so I think you get three minutes.
Okay. I'll tell you what we'll do, Ms. Tumbleson. We'll give you three minutes. If you run slightly over, we'll do it liberally so you get a chance to talk. How's that?
Okay. I'm sorry?
We'll give you your three minutes, but if you run a little long, not another three minutes, but a little long.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So Cheryl, you can start the timer. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Mayor, City Council. In 2016, I spoke for Charles Stevenson as a best candidate for city manager in the city, in the area. He's not a transplant or someone from other areas that do not have the contacts in local, county, and state government. He is administrator of goals and wishes for the council. His professional background is he's graduated from University of Florida, Florida City and County Manager Membership Certification, Certified Building Code Administrator and Inspector. He's a Florida Fire Marshal and Inspector. Charles Stephen has been around, I'm sorry, Charles Stevenson has been around as city manager for several years. He's balanced the budget, made improvements for the communities, including Temple Terrace Family Recreation Center and all other valued assets for the city of Temple Terrace. City has been given increases in the past few years, and all staff has been retained throughout this tough year. He's negotiated contracts on Bush and 56, Amazon, and other developments, including annexation, not just one or two houses, but land and commercial property. He's used the Community Investment Program, which was approved by the taxpayers in 1996, which doesn't use property taxes, to provide funds from the fire, police, and recreation area, which is, you know, a new ambulance and fire truck are on their way. The police department has gotten vehicles and other equipment for their safety. Charles Stevenson has made our website user-friendly, includes the television channel updates. His knowledge of the services required and expected of the service is invaluable. He works well with council and departments and residents for staff and duties that he performs. Charles Stevenson's knowledge of the financial situation, which has been greatly improved over the past last year. Money is now in reserves. Temple Terrace is a stone's throw from USF, Moffitt, Florida Hospital, and various other employment centers. By abutting major intersections as I-75, I-4, 275, residents can be in a major tourist attraction within minutes. This is a desired location. In closing, I want you to realize that residents are looking at council for the proper decisions to make the contract for Charles Stevenson. Okay? Hey. All right. Now, I want to talk about the site plan at Salem.
Okay. But you have another three minutes. You got another 30, 45 seconds, but not another three minutes, okay?
Oh, I don't?
No. That's what I said at the beginning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll bring that back up at another meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have no consent agenda. First item on the, next item on the agenda is the second public hearing and reading of an ordinance to adopt 2020 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update. I'll open the public hearing. Planner Celeste Lau will provide a brief explanation.
Thank you.
After the fire chief defunks the podium there.
Thanks.
Hello, Celeste.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This item was presented by Diego Guerra of the Planning Commission staff last week, or not last week, sorry, our last city council meeting on October 6. It's typical that, you know, during the second meeting, he doesn't typically come back just because it's sort of the same information that you've heard already. But I just wanted to come up and sort of introduce the item again, and if you have any questions, staff is here to assist in any way they can. Okay? Thanks.
Well, could you at least give a brief recap for any of the members of the public that might be watching that didn't catch the last meeting? You don't have to run through each page, but...
Sure.
You don't have the slideshow queued up?
I don't think so, no. Yeah, because I didn't think it was needed. But it's essentially an annual update that's done to our capital improvement plan, schedule of improvements within the city. So these pertain to sidewalks, roadways, anything like, you know, trails, stuff like that. And we work between, you know, staff here works with planning commission staff to kind of make sure that it matches with our budget that's been approved by council, you know, annually.
Very good. And just for members of the public who may be watching, this is a long list of, there's a spreadsheet that contains, as Ms. Lau mentioned, a host of projects. This isn't just one capital project we're approving. It's the annual list of capital projects. So, and that is available to residents if they wish to. Very good. Are there members of the public present? Either of you? I guess we have a few that would like to address the council on this item. If not, council members, do you have any questions of Ms. Lau? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the capital improvement section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the city of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 through 2024 through 2025 and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for 2021 through 2030 into the schedule of projects, adopting by reference per Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 1.5.13 Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transit's Transit Development Plan, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1499?
I move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A nay sign? No nays. Ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 firefighter pension and retirement of the city code of ordinances adding the required IRS changes. Fire Chief Ian Kemp will explain.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordnances, firefighter pension and retirement, adding required IRS changes. As you're aware, the city of Temple Terrace has created a retirement system for firefighters employed by the Temple Terrace firefighters to provide pension, death, and disability benefits. It is intended that the system will constitute a tax-qualified public pension plan under the Internal Revenue Code and its regulations. The Setting Every Community Up for Retirement Enhancement Act, also known as Secure Act, was passed by Congress and signed into law by the President in December of 2019 and was effective January 1, 2020. This act increased the age at which a minimum distributions are required from age 70 and a half to 72 years. Because of these changes, the board is proposing these appropriate changes be made to the plan in order to maintain the plan's tax qualification. There is no cost to the pension plan nor the city. It is recommended that the city council approve the proposed ordinance adding this new language.
Good. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Chief Kemp? Very good. If not, Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the ordinance, please?
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration and Elections, Article 3 Officers and Employees, Division 3 Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision 4 Firefighters of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Temple Terrace, amending Section 2-203 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending Section 2-209 Optional Forms of Benefit Income, amending Section 2-222 Miscellaneous Provisions, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repelling All Ordinances in Conflict therewith, and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading?
Move to approve the motion on the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the firefighter pension and retirement to comply with IRS changes.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A nay sign? Ordinance is passed. If, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Monday, November the 2nd. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 Administration and Elections of the City Code of Ordnances. City Attorney Pam Sashon will explain.
As you know, through this last year, there have been a number of emergency orders issued by the state due to the pandemic. There have also been emergency-type orders issued by the county and the county group that was put together. Once that group was then basically disbanded by the Board of County Commissioners, that seemed to leave us in a no-man's land. We are left to either rely on the county commission to do something, or we then have to look to ourselves, if necessary, and take some sort of an action. Secondly, there are times where an emergency may impact only the city of Temple Terrace, in which case we cannot rely on the county because it really doesn't affect them. So we would have to issue our own emergency order. Our charter speaks to it briefly in a couple of places, but does not really go any further forward than to discuss that a certain number of city council members is necessary to do that. Unfortunately, it tends to conflict with what Florida law says under the statutes as far as how many are necessary of a board in order to declare a state of emergency, and it speaks to there being two-thirds. In our case, two-thirds of five is a three and a fraction of another person. So that we've addressed in this proposed ordinance as well. Our charter also speaks to declaring an emergency, but does not distinguish between types of an emergent, types of emergencies. Florida law now does. It talks about emergencies that, such as a hurricane, would be something from a natural disaster. It distinguishes that from an emergency due to civil unrest or riot. The criteria for declaring those types of emergencies is different. Obviously, our charter does not address the minutia of what is required to declare those different types of emergencies. Also, the Florida law under Chapter 870, in addressing an emergency due to civil unrest, gives a municipality the opportunity to choose who is designated to declare that emergency. It puts the opportunity on either the mayor or on a police chief. The default position is the police chief, but again, it does give a municipality the option of designating somebody. So we, at this point, we can either let it default to the police chief, or we can make a decision as we've proposed, and we've actually designated the police chief in the proposed ordinance, but at least you're making that decision as a body for our city. So there are a number of items that were addressed in the proposed ordinance that is on the agenda tonight, and that was provided to you ahead of time. The question may come up, why have this at all? Again, our charter does guide us, but not sufficiently. We are hoping that this ordinance will fill in some of those gaps. It also provides the citizens, as well as our city staff and our officials, with a compilation. I have, we have not repeated every statute that applies word for word, but we have addressed the major portions of the applicable statutes and put them here. Therefore, in an emergency, when you don't have time to now start going to all the different chapters and searching through the statutes, saying, gee, what covers this? We can go directly to our one ordinance that will provide you the basic information that you need, and because it also does reference those statutes, if you're looking for more information, you know exactly which statute to go to and not the, you know, 900 chapters or more to start looking for which one applies. Once upon a time, when government took action to protect the citizens during an emergency, which is the primary job of government to provide protection to the citizens, the citizens rarely took issue. As we've seen in this last year, that is not the case anymore. And someone said to me yesterday that an ounce of procedure is worth a pound of litigation. So this is our ounce of procedure in hopes of having a place where everyone can look to, and they can either look at the Florida statutes and see what we must follow as the law, or they can look to our ordinances. One thing that I will point out that I want to say is questionable, that could be questionable, I'm willing to admit it, is that our charter only says that a certain number of councilmen or councilpeople are required or are necessary to declare an emergency. They don't go any further than that. We've seen what happens now during this pandemic, or even if it was a tornado. What if we can't get that many people on our council together in order to declare that Florida statute says it requires two-thirds. What if we can't get that many people together to declare that emergency? Certainly, it could be challenged. Anything can be. But what we've done in the ordinance is at least put something down to codify what happens if we cannot get that many people together. And we have sort of a line of succession outlined here. Who would it go to next if we can't get two-thirds together? What if we can't find that one person, then? If it goes, if we go from two-thirds, then say, the mayor could do it, or the city manager could do it. We need to have a line of succession, and we've all seen how difficult it can be in just the pandemic of getting everybody together when we have people who are not able to meet. And as I said, if it was a hurricane or a tornado, somebody could be dealing with a house that's destroyed. How do we get everybody together? So we've laid that out as well, and hopefully that will give us some guidance in the future. So my recommendation, I'm recommending to council that we adopt these procedures and add this particular section now to our, to our Chapter 2, which is titled, let's see, what do you got? I'll find it. Our Administration and Elections, Chapter 2, we would be adding Article 6 titled Civil Emergency Management to our city code. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Council member questions? Mr. Sisner?
Yeah. I know I had asked you several times on this, Ms. Sashon. At, under, either scenario, okay? Either scenario, civil unrest or a natural disaster. And can't convene a council. So in civil unrest, I think it's the police chief first, and then the mayor, if he's not available, he or she is not available. And with the natural disaster, it's...
The mayor.
Got to go back.
Counsel first.
Counsel.
Counsel first.
Everything's in absence of counsel. If, it goes then to the, who's first? If counsel can't convene...
The mayor.
The mayor?
Then the city manager.
Then the city manager.
Correct.
Okay.
Then the fire chief.
Correct.
So it's mayor, council, then mayor, then city manager, then fire chief or police chief, or fire chief, right?
We sort of ended at fire chief, and as I said, our charter stops at council.
Okay.
There's nothing after that.
Okay. Well, my question is, the normal state of emergency would stay in effect for seven days. If the, whatever it is, happens on Monday, can't convene council, so the first-line accession takes over, do we have to wait seven days, or can the council meet on Tuesday and override that emergency order?
You can, you can cancel it. You can cancel it before the seven days is up. So council could meet prior to the seven days and say, we don't need a state, we don't need a state of emergency anymore, so we're canceling that. So you can convene early. You can certainly convene on a Saturday. You know, if we are in the state of emergency and our council needs to convene, I would hope that we would try to convene. But again, if you can't, then it would default, it would go next to the, to the mayor individually, and then next to the city manager.
Okay. The only problem that I have, it's not really a problem. I mean, I've been, I've been, you know, we've been talking about this for quite a while, is the fact that if the council can't convene and the state of emergency needs to be declared, then the appropriate person does it, but the council should try to meet as soon as possible.
Correct.
Okay? I mean, not, they don't have to wait seven days...
No.
...in order for that to happen.
No.
I think the intent would be for council, can't meet Monday, but we can meet Tuesday.
And with civil unrest, that only, that declaration only lasts 72 hours.
Okay.
And then it would have to be renewed, so...
I did see that. Okay. All right. That was my question. I just, how long it stays in place and can council, should council needs to meet right away as soon as practical and possible to take over the control of it?
Yes. Yeah. And you bring up a good point, Mr. Sisner, and in the discussions, it was, in deference to our form of government, the cascade goes from the council. So if it's something like a hurricane that we know is approaching, it's the council is the supreme. The council under the charter is the supreme. So the council would convene. Something happens suddenly, a tornado, a fire...
Right.
Then I would be able to, whoever's sitting in this seat would be able to at that point. And if, and if I am out also, then Mr. Stevenson, whoever occupies that, and then it goes to the fire chief. And the thinking is, if the council's unavailable and the mayor's unavailable, the city manager's unavailable, and the fire chief's unavailable, we got problems anyway, right? And in a riot or civil unrest situation, the statutes were a little, it could be either the mayor or the city or the police chief, but it really should be the police chief because the police are going to be the closest to the scene. They're going to be the ones with eyes on. It shouldn't be, you know, the elected mayor who, you know, I mean, who knows who's going to, so you got to run that up to the police chief, through the city manager to get to the mayor. They don't need all that time. It should be the police chief. I mean, their people can see what's going on. They need to act.
Just, just to throw this out there, in the course of researching all this, there's a Florida statute that gives every individual council member, in a municipality, the authority to order a, a group that is creating a civil unrest to disperse. So, I mean, it lays out so many individuals who have the authority to order people to disperse.
We just stand in front of them and say, go home.
Every, and every one of you has that authority under Florida law, so...
Yeah. Well, I was happy to see that what you consider civil unrest is very defined.
It is by Florida law.
And is that, that is by Florida statute, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I personally, I think this was very well crafted, and if you get into the other sections of it, it gives the city manager the administrative control of, you know, everything, which is really as it should be. And it keeps us kind of out of it, which is as it should be, too.
And, and the other thing that caused us to start looking at this is, many cities and counties put out emergency orders during this past year, and I was reading many of them, and they would make reference to their authority coming from their own ordinance. So of course, I went to look months ago. It's like, okay, well, where, what does ours say? And we didn't have one. So it's like, if all these other cities are relying on their own authority in addition to Florida law, because we do have emergency powers under Florida law, but they were going to their own ordinance, I felt like we should have one, too, so...
I totally agree.
Council members, other questions? There's three other people in this room that this affects greatly, Mr. Stevenson and the two chiefs. Do you have any input on this?
Mr. Stevenson and the two chiefs, do you have any input on this?
No, I think the conditions is fine. The two chiefs and myself, we had a chance to put in a document, there were some changes that the commission made, based on recommendations.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading?
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I did the same mistake two meetings in a row. Somebody needs to throw some.
I'm listening.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter Two, Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances by enacting a new Article Six, Civil Emergency Management, consistent of a newly created Sections Two dash four oh one through Two dash four oh nine, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Vice Mayor, I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay.
Please proceed.
I get the call, I make the motion. First, I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Administration and Elections of the City Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Ordinance passes on first reading. Ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Monday, November the second. Next item is a resolution approving the annual renewal of the Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement. Police Chief Ken Albano will explain.
Good evening, mayor, and members of city council. Ken Albano, your police chief. Before you tonight, for your consideration and approval, is the renewal of our Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement with Communications International. The selection of Communications International as our vendor of choice for the radio maintenance and equipment support is in keeping with the previously approved parameters of the police department's 2013 800 megahertz radio migration project whereby city council authorized the use of Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office RFP 26-10 for the purpose of the implementation, phased build-out, and ongoing maintenance of the newly acquired equipment. On January 2nd, 2020, HSO executed an extension of its contract with Communications International, written pursuant to RFP 26-10. In accordance with the aforementioned contract extension and upon the approval of city council, Communications International will continue to serve as the designated vendor for maintenance and support of the city's public safety radio system. The annual renewal cost of $56,000, I'm sorry, $59,697. Funding for this expense, including, included in, is included in the fiscal year 2021 annual budget. The expense will be paid from the police department's radio maintenance account, 001-1411-5214615. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the renewal of the Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement with Communications International. This agreement to be effective for a period of 12 months, beginning October 1st of 2020 and ending September 30th of 2021. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Good. Thank you, chief. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmember questions? No questions? If not, all, if there are motion to approve the resolution?
Need to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Resolution is passed. Thank you, chief. Next item is a resolution approving the revised CARES Act funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, October 6th, city council adopted Resolution 101-20, approving the CARES Act funding agreement between the county and the city. Since that approval by this council, the county has gone back and tried to revise the agreement, to our benefit, from what I understand. The Section Seven, they talk about funding and the delineation of what can be funded. The county has decided that it would be in our best interest, and theirs as well, to not be so specific. So that section was deleted and replaced with a little bit broader language that allows us to use some guidance from the U.S. Treasury. This stems out of my question to them is, what is, what is appropriate funding and what is appropriate criteria that we can use? So they've tried to broaden that conversation a little bit with us. There's some FAQs that the Treasury has sent to us, and I think I explained last meeting that we're going to not push the envelope with it, but we're going to be very comfortable with what we're spending. So the agreement, revised agreement is before you this evening. There is some changes, some additions to the funding, Section Seven. Section 10, that talks about reporting. 15 is termination, according to Florida statutes. Section 17 on payments and a certification that they want from us when we're requesting payments. And then repayments, again, whatever money we don't use, we're obligated to give back to them. So the agreement's been revised to, to what the Board of County Commissioners has approved. Mrs. Shown has reviewed this agreement. We're okay with it. There's nothing in there that, other than what previously committed us to anything that has been added to it. So we're good with that. So with that, I would ask council to move to approve the resolution that would revise this CARES Act funding agreement.
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there public comment on this item? Councilmember questions? Mr. Sisner?
Was this the, is, this is just the 220, whatever, the small amount, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hold your breath. I've got another agenda item that addresses that.
Okay.
The next agenda item addresses the increase.
Okay. But my question then is, did we ever get a clarification?
That addresses just the $228,000, yes.
Okay. But do we ever get a clarification on, all right, so that, my question's going to apply to the 2.9. So should I wait on the question, or?
I can answer that question.
Encumbered?
I had a conversation with the...
Is it encumbered or spent?
According to, I had a meeting with Ms. Wise, the county administrator, the other day. Their interpretation of the federal guidance is spent.
Okay.
Now, everybody's holding their breath, thinking that reality may at some point compel Congress to change it to encumbered, but the county's understanding right now, their interpretation of the federal language is spent.
What's our risk of the 228 having been spent? Or is that all spent?
We've got, we've actually got 228,000 in reimbursements that we can use since March.
Okay.
So we're good with that.
Yeah, the real concern is the 2.9.
The 2.9.
Just for the public who's watching that may be confused by this, we applied and obtained $228,000 in CARES Act money through Hillsborough County. That money is already here, and spending that is no problem, because most of that $228,000 is reimbursement for money that has already been spent. In addition to that, the next item on the agenda where you'll hear us talk about is another 2.9, 2.7 million dollars that we've applied for in addition to the 228,000. That money, we have not received yet. There's concern about our ability to spend that much money on COVID-related items by the expiration date of December 30th. And our concern is that we may wind up having to give a lot of that money back, because you just can't find some of the things that we want to buy, like touchless bathroom fixtures and plexiglass and things like that. You can't get it. That's what we're talking about. And the question that came up was, does the money have to actually be spent, or can it just be encumbered? And right now, it's our understanding that it has to be spent. So that's just clarification. I jumped ahead a little bit for the people.
Sorry.
That's okay, because the people watching at home, I want them to understand what we're talking about. So are there other questions about item E, the 228,000? If not, is there a motion to approve the revised CARES Act funding agreement?
Motion to approve the revised CARES Act funding agreement with the county.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The revisions are approved. Next item is resolution approving the first modification of the CARES Act funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace. City Manager Steven, I don't know if we made it easier for you or worse for you.
They've put me to work this week, that's for sure. We revised the agreement, now we're going to modify the agreement. Before you, is a resolution to modify, first modification of the CARES Act funding agreement between the county and the city. This revises the amount that we would be eligible for from the 228,817 dollars to 2.9 million dollars. This is to be heard by the B O C C tomorrow morning. There is, we're expected to have this approved, but we need to do this further for a modification so I can provide this to Mr. Fesler first thing in the morning. So this is, all this does is modification keeps, it changes the dollar amount, basically.
Or is there public comment on this item? Okay. Councilmember questions?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
The question was asked last, at the last meeting, if we could pay for some of the things, like our new trash cans and things like that. Did we research, because I see it says here that they can only be used as follows, were not accounted for in the budget. So did we research that? Is that why that's here, or did they clarify that for us?
We asked that question. If it is a budgeted item that we adopted, we cannot use CARES Act funding money.
It's a good idea, though.
That was, that was...
You had to ask.
I, we really, we kind of threw that around the office as well. It may be a good use of funds, but we're, we're not eligible for that.
One of those things that sounds like a good idea in the short term, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
No.
Don't feel comfortable.
Other questions?
I will have, if I could?
Yes.
Have some more conversation. One of the things, and we've talked about this last meeting, and you just mentioned it again, Mr. Mayor, is it's going to be awful difficult to get some of this material and labor done by the end of the year. We've had a different interpretation out of state, some of the D E P people, I will share with council tomorrow. I don't know if the county would recognize that, but certainly, there's a lot of confusion going on right now.
There is.
We're moving forward with it, and I need council to understand that under, under our procurement policies or purchasing manual, it allows us to do emergency purchases. I would like to have council's authority to make some of these emergency purchases. What it does is it, it opens the ceiling up for the amount, and also lets, allows finance to document that we're sole sourcing a lot of this stuff. We have released a lot of this to be quoted out. We've got a lot of this, it's underway. So it's going to be impossible, literally impossible, and it will make it a lot more complicated if we have to go through three vendors, get quotes, so on and so forth. Our purchasing manual allows us to do this in the emergency case. It doesn't list pandemic, but it does list health and safety issues, and certainly, I think that qualifies here. So I would ask council to relax those procurement policies for, for us to kind of get a lot of this done.
Well, in the interest of clarity, shouldn't we probably discuss that after we vote on this?
It'd be fun.
Yeah, just in the interest of, let's dispose of this item, and then under, bring that right back up. How's that?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions relating to this?
No.
If not, is there a motion to approve the modification of the CARES Act funding agreement?
Need to approve the resolution approving the first modification of CARES Act.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The modification is passed. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Stevenson, what is it that, do you need a formal action from us, or you just need us to give you the nod, or what is it that you need from us?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think just really, just kind of understanding that we're wanting to relax these, these procedures. Emergency purchases under Chapter 18 of our purchasing manual, it allows for that. I certainly just need council to be well aware. We've spoken with our finance people, we've spoken with our financial advisors, they all understand. We've made provisions to have a COVID-related invoice and purchase order. We're still going through the purchase order system. Delineated with some verbiage that says, this is why we're doing this, and here's the reason. So it becomes part of our audit package, if you would. It makes everybody comfortable.
So refresh...
Those are the things that they look at.
Refresh everybody's memory, what is the spending cap that you can do without council approvals, without an emergency, without us giving this? And then what is the spending cap that you can do without council approval?
It is $25,000.
Under normal procurement?
Yes, sir.
And if we exercise this option under emergency, what does it become? Limitless?
There is no, there is no cap on it.
Okay. So it becomes 2.9 million dollars?
Right. We have standard operating procedures that if there's something more than $1,000, you've got to get two quotes. If it's more than $2,000, you got to get three quotes, so on and so forth. Those procedures are in place. This specifically talks about health and safety, welfare that may arise from hurricanes, flood, equipment failure, other disruptions to, to essential services. Obviously, it doesn't specify pandemic, but certainly, I think that the pandemic would certainly fit into this declaration of emergency purchase. So, you know, we're looking at putting hand-free fixtures in this building. It's more than $25,000, and we want to do it to all seven of our facilities. So it's obviously a purchase of more than $25,000.
Let me ask a question. Assuming the B O C C approves the additional 2.7 million tomorrow, when would we get that money?
I don't know. I don't have that answer.
Okay. And the point I'm getting at is this, is it, I don't really have, personally, I don't know about the other, the other members, I don't have any real heartburn in doing that, because there's a time crunch here. But I do think, in the interest of transparency, that, I mean, we haven't even seen the list of stuff that you plan to buy with the 2.7. Is there, is there ample time for you to at least furnish us with the list of things that you want to buy, so that we can, I feel like we're writing a blank check and just turning you loose with $3 million. Not, I don't mean that you're going to do anything.
I understand, I understand.
But I think, if there's time, I don't think we're going to hold in, we meet again on November 2nd, it's only, you know, it's not that long. Chances are, you're not going to be writing checks out of that account that quick. Does that make sense, or am I...
That, that's more than reasonable. I think last week, I shared with you a summary, if you would. We have, we have clarified that just a little bit on another schedule. I'd be more than happy to provide that to council, so that you know what we're doing. It is no different than what I...
But you could make it an agenda item, put that list on the agenda for everybody to see, and then we could give you an up or down vote, which I'm sure we're...
We can, we can do that, certainly. I mean, we're, we're fairly organized and planned out with what we want to do, so...
I don't want to hold it up, but I don't think that will.
Well, we're still trying, yeah, we're still, we're still trying to secure some quotes and straighten some quotes out, because the original quote we had was to put in, I don't know, 23 fixtures, and we only need 18. So those are the things that we're tweaking to make sure that what we get is, is something that we can get audited on and feel comfortable with.
Councilmembers, what are your...
I completely agree with your take on it, Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross. I want to, I, I think in order to vote on this before the public, we need to say, and this is what we're buying with the money. So as long as we have that at the next meeting, by then, you will have either been able to get bids or, or whatever, just to get started. I'm sure you're not going to wait until November 2nd.
That would be fairly easy to do. We're, we've created a list already. So again, we're trying to tweak it, make sure that everything is right, as far as quantities and cost and everything else.
Okay.
We can, we can provide that to you.
Does that sound like a reasonable approach, everybody?
Second, for, for general discussion, not to micromanage what you're buying or what the, I just have a problem suspending procurement policies. That just, I just, that bothers me. But anyway, but understood, if we have an idea ahead of time what we're dealing with, then it might be something that we can work with.
But everybody's having to do that because of the CARES Act language. I mean, Hillsborough, Plain City, Tampa, everybody's having to do the same.
Yeah.
It's, there's no way you can go through the normal government. But, okay.
If we were to have to follow the procurement requirements that we have in our purchasing manual, we'll never get this done.
It'd be, wouldn't be worth the time we spent submitting for the money. It wouldn't be worth the time we spent submitting for the money.
I'm telling you right now, we would not be able to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we...
Everything over $25,000 in every single item, I'd have to bring to council for approval on their resolution. I just, we won't get it done.
Okay, so we have a path to move forward, right?
Yeah, we'll continue moving forward, and we'll get this schedule together and share it with council, and make sure that you guys understand what we're doing.
Very good. Carryover council business. Nothing? New business or board reports? Anything to report? Mr. Chalora.
Just new business. I wondered, I spoke to the city manager about it today, and it's a growing problem throughout the city. And there is, the number of migrants, migrants throughout our city right now has multiplied. I've lived in this city for many, many, many years, and this past week alone, there's been multiple sightings of folks just laid out on the sidewalks and public buildings or private buildings. It just, it's a problem, and it's happening more and more and more. And it's a safety issue. People are scared to frequent their businesses when you have somebody laid out on sidewalks. I don't know what the, the answer is. It didn't used to be like this. I'm not sure if we need more presence out there, more patrolling, I don't know. But what I've seen these last few weeks, I've never seen. And it's just, I got a call last night, 11 o'clock. I saw two different people today hanging out, just almost lounged out, backpacks, shoes off, had their phones plugged into the outlets, like they live there. This is not what Temple Terrace is about. I mean, if you don't have a place to stay, there are shelters for you. You can go visit them. But definitely don't need this in the public's eye where folks are scared to visit a business, or you don't, certainly don't want to by your front door. We've called the police department three times this past week with an issue. So, it's definitely becoming a larger problem, and it's not just here in Temple Terrace, it's in other surrounding areas as well. But I've noticed it specifically where I frequent most, and it's just not something that I think the city is, has put up with in the past. And there may be, I don't know what the answer is, but we may need a different approach. Example, I know there is a trespass program in place. We have it on many locations. But when we call the police, they don't trespass, and they just tell them, hey, move on. Unless somebody specifically says, don't come back, they'll come back. So, I would hope that, I know the police chief's here, I would hope that in the future, we, and the police do a great job. I'm not saying that they're not doing a good job. I'm just seeing this as a recurring problem, and it's happening more. You're seeing people that's, I guess against the law, even sitting on the corners asking for money. And I know Tampa and the, and the city a while back have, you know, not encouraged that type of behavior, but I see it happening more. I have all the respect for our police department. I mean, they're phenomenal. But I just, this is a problem that I'm seeing starting to recur quite a bit. Normally, you get somebody once every month or two, okay? But in these past couple of weeks, I've seen like four or five, and it's just too much happening at one time. So, maybe, you know, I don't know what the, the answer is. I obviously don't have that kind of background, but I would hope that, you know, we can maybe address that in a manner where we can curb this, this new trend that's I've seen taking place these last few weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalora. Other new business or board reports? City managers' report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things here. I've got, just a reminder that our next meeting is on Monday and not Tuesday. Again, don't forget market calendars. There's a couple of things that have come up here that, I think last meeting, we kind of indicated we were trying to do something for Veterans Day. And we've got something going on right now in lieu of Government Week. Government Week is one of those things we usually did in October. Obviously, with the conditions of COVID, we're having to make things different. Lori Hayes is kind of working on this, if I can have her come up, explain those two things that we've got going on, their alternatives. And while she's coming up, I will tell you this, that Mr. Langfeld and myself have had some conversations about having the fireworks at New Year's. We have locked that date in with that vendor. And we, we kind of intend to move in that direction unless things change. We kind of left it open so that if things start getting worse with COVID, then we would have to make an adjustment. But we're trying desperately to do this New Year's Eve, so, just to let you know. We have to have a conversation with our two police chief, or chief, our chief, police chief, and start making provisions to do this. But we're moving in that direction unless something drastically happens and something changes with COVID.
Ms. Hayes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and council members. Happy Florida City Government Week. So, City Government Week is an annual observance that was established by the Florida League of Cities, and this year it's being celebrated from October 19th to the 25th. Traditionally, the city has partnered with Florida College to bring some students in to have them shadow directors. We would have a mock council meeting, but we had to postpone that due to COVID. So, not wanting to let it go completely uncelebrated, we are doing a City Government Week contest on Facebook to have our Facebook fans demonstrate their knowledge of the city. And we're using our mascot, Temple the Orange, and we're doing a game kind of along the lines of Where's Waldo? Last week, the Orange and I went out in the city, and we took a bunch of pictures of some of his favorite places. And during this week, we started yesterday, and we'll go through Sunday, we're posting one picture a day for people to guess where he is, and then doing a random drawing of all the correct guesses to win a $50 gift card to a local restaurant. On the last day, Sunday, we'll have a grand prize drawing from all of the correct guesses to win three $50 gift cards. We wanted to celebrate Government Week. We also wanted to drive people to the city's official Facebook page. Right now, we have 5,750 people who have liked the page. Since the contest started, we've added 30, and I would imagine that it's just going to keep going up. So, that was, you know, a good thing. We also are supporting local businesses because the city did go out and get the gift certificates. We're hoping to drive people to the restaurants, either an old favorite or to come up with, you know, a restaurant that they haven't visited yet. We awarded our first prize this afternoon. It went to Allison Sullins, and she came to City Hall with her daughter Charlotte, and they actually got their gift certificate from Temple the Orange. As Mr. Stevenson mentioned, we also want to take this opportunity to, again, ask for help in collecting names for the Temple Terrace veterans. After the cancellation of the Fourth of July parade, and then the annual Veterans Day observance that we normally have at the Arts and Crafts Festival, we wanted to find a safe but kind of conspicuous way to recognize the veterans. So, I created these yard signs, which we are going to distribute to all the veterans whose addresses we can collect between now and the weekend before Veterans Day. So, we are continuing to collect those names and addresses. You can call me at 506-6406, or send me an email at lhayes@templeterris.com, and we would be happy to place a yard sign in all the yards that we can find. So, I thank you for your help in getting the word out about this, and, you know, we're pretty excited about this, and the veterans will keep the signs, and hopefully they'll keep putting them out year after year. So, thank you.
Great idea. Thank you for all you're doing there, Ms. Hayes. Appreciate that. You still have the floor, sir?
I'm done, sir.
You're done? City attorneys' report.
I don't have anything this evening.
Nothing to report. Very good. I have one quick, I'm sorry, you did a do-over. Go ahead.
No, I was going to make sure that you mentioned...
Nope, I got it. Okay, thank you. Just to those watching, for those few members of the public here and those watching at home, we have a, the city manager, myself, and the Business Relations Director, Greg Pauli, have been working really since March to try to sustain and figure out how to benefit and how we can increase the survivability and the success of our local businesses in light of this pandemic. And so, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Pauli have done a lot. You know, we've done some things with the sign ordinance. We've really tried to do what we can. But in addition to that, we are meeting with, trying to get local business owners to come and meet with us next week to discuss some strategies. And we have two meetings scheduled. They're both at the Golf and Country Club. They're early in the morning. They're designed for business owners. So, the first one is Thursday, October 29th, at 8:00 in the morning. The next day, on Friday, October 30th, we meet at 7:00 in the morning, for those people who may need to get to their business and open up earlier. We do have pre-registration available on the city's website, so we know how much coffee to provide and how many chairs to put out. But if you would please help us pass the word to your local businesses in particular, everybody's welcome, but the local businesses are really who we're targeting. So, if you would mention this to any local businesses that you might patronize, your barber shop, your hair salons, those kinds of things, we will provide everybody with coffee that morning. We've pledged that each of these meetings will be an hour long, so you can plan to get out of there and get to your business. If you want to stay late and talk to us, that's up to you. We'll stay, but you'll be done and ready to leave after one hour. So, you can plan to get to your business and open, and start your day, so. And that's all I have. Councilmembers, any other business to come before the council?
Yeah, go raise.
Go raise. Any other business? If not, we are adjourned.